All right, it's 7:01. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first thing we have is approval of agenda.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Um, I mean, we don't really, if it's just in contracts, do we really even need to add in the principal contract?
No.
Anybody else have anything that they seem like want to add around? Nope, good, all right, all those in favor, say aye. And Stephen's good.
I'm going to abstain since I just walked in.
Sounds good. All right, and the next thing would be public input and announcements.
Does anybody want to do anything?
Nope.
Anybody online?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so then the next is approval of minutes from 5:124. Who do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
You second?
Second.
Any comments? Edits?
One minor notable. Section five is not intended like the rest. I like the way you think.
That margin.
We can fix that.
All right, without, with the margin correction, is everyone else good? All right, all those in favor?
Good.
It's everybody. Lovely. We don't have the student rep here today. That, so then the next thing on the agenda is retreat planning.
So I think Nick had asked for this last meeting so that we could start nailing down summer times before we get too close to summer, just knowing that calendars fill up and schedules get kind of busy.
So, um, do we have, there's, you know, different things that we can do during the retreat, like, do we want to focus on, we have a lot of new board members, do we want to figure, like, relook at board goals, and so, and be that as our, like, main thing to do, or did, Nick, did you have a specific other thing that you wanted to address? Because I think it is a good idea for us to spend some time as a longer group.
I think the bylaws, we need, take some time to look at those.
Yeah.
That came up in community engagement committee again.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned it.
Yep.
Not my idea.
Um, so, what we did before was, we were doing it on like a Saturday morning, and we would schedule like just a couple of hours.
Usually like three?
Yeah, like three hours. And we would work on something for long form. Does, would that work for folks again? Is Saturdays, in, in general, before we try to find a specific day, are those, is that a good time that can work for people? Okay, that's good. So then, the challenge is, then you have to actually go to the specific dates of what actually works. Would we want to do, do we want to try to do two, or do we want to just try to do one?
Well.
Because you could do one where it was like, look at all, like, go over bylaws and see if we need to do any adjustments, and then one that was a review of board goals, or, because it's, I think it's hard to do both of those effectively in that amount of time. But that's just my opinion, other people can.
I think we should do two, I, I just think it's easier than trying to stretch it out over, like, say, four hours.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do two and two, that kind of thing.
Yep.
I just think two would work better.
Okay.
Well, I've only been through the, the one year so far, and last time we did them two spaced apart.
Yeah.
And we effectively adjourned early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were like two and a half hours each.
Yeah, right.
And just said, okay, that's, we're done.
Right, and I, I think in general, that, those, and the one before that were really the heavy lift of really, like, looking at stuff. The bylaws, I'm not so sure about, because I was, I, I don't know if we really, how much we need to change, but like, the goals, I think a lot of that, we worked on last time, and then this time is more of like, okay, what are we getting rid, like, you know, there's, I think there's less getting rid of everything and rebuilding, so we might be able to.
We were going all the way back to still looking at mission, vision, values.
Right.
We were still reviewing that.
Yeah.
To get oriented again to it. So I think you're right, that looking at the goals is going to be a little quicker conversation, so that we'll do, I think, you know, an hour of reviewing how things have gone this year, I don't know, might even be too much, but an hour of, okay, so what are we going to do differently? I think that's, that's definitely accomplishable in two hours.
And then once we start editing, then it takes a long time sometimes.
And, and I even think, and I'm jumping a little ahead, agenda building on the 29th, we would have on our schedule to look back and check in on our goals on the 29th. And if we don't do that on the 29th, we're going to have a kind of short meeting on the 29th.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So there might be a little bit of lead in to that retreat day anyway, if that's a lot of the work you want to do. I wonder if we maybe couldn't use the 29th well, so that the first retreat day, you actually could do maybe like, an hour and a half on goals, and then maybe a half hour on bylaws?
Yeah.
Then pick up the bylaws again at the next retreat day? You know, if we reviewed the bylaws together and maybe thought about some changes, and then we went off and did some changes, and then came back?
Yeah.
I wonder if that would be a good patterned approach, both of those.
Yeah, because if it feels like, because we're probably not going to do like a makeup for pre-K or anything on that day, like, because if there's nothing, if we don't have any other thing that's scheduled.
Well, and even if we do, even if we do pre-K on the 29th, we're going to have a lot of time to do other things.
That's fine with me. The next question is, is it, because we used, we did, we can do those, the, what is those, the date survey things that we do?
Yeah, we can do, we can do one of those.
Is that, is it easier to just get an email that just says, like, here's days, check the days that you're available, and then we say, as long as we have quorum, we're basically good? Because sometimes it, it doesn't work out that we can have the vast majority.
That's better than each of us going.
I think, I think that's the way we did it last time, right?
Yeah.
Because I know I missed one, and somebody else missed one last time, but by consensus, as long as you get majority.
Yeah, we should be good. All right, let's do that, then we don't have to spend time right now trying to figure out.
Right.
What we, what weekend will actually work.
Yeah, we're missing a handful of people.
Very true.
So we, of course, would pick a day that those folks do not make it.
Okay, great, so the plan will be?
And I can coordinate doing Saturdays, and, but it sounds like we're going to focus on Saturday mornings, and we'll find the Saturday morning that works the best?
Yeah.
Okay, two of them, okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any other thoughts about that, that they would like to talk about? Nope, great, all right, the next thing is food service contract.
Okay. So this is a renewal contract with our food service company, Lexington Independence. That's who's been serving us, gosh, now for maybe, maybe four or five years. It's been a little while, their names changed a little bit, the, the company we were initially working with got bought out by a larger company. The, we're going to go out to bid next year, because it'll be time to go out to bid next year. This is just our renewal for, under our current contract, when we went out to bid the last time. So that's a little bit confusing, but built into some of these contracts are planned increases, and, you know, with the way the economy's been going in food, I think we've all kind of felt that, you know, that's, when we go to the grocery store, prices are definitely different. This contract follows the rate approved by the state for allowable increase, so that's why this is not going out to bid. This falls under all of those wonderful state and board bid laws and policies. So the recommendation is to approve this increase for next year's contract, but I do think having that context of, we are going out to bid fully next year, we'll start that process probably in the fall, to obtain a new contract for FY '26.
And most likely, the number will be much higher than what it is right now?
Ah, you know, the.
They've already asked for like two increases or something?
And we're starting to get into discussion, sorry. Recommendation is to approve the contract with the allowable increase per state guidelines.
Do you have a motion for that?
A motion?
Second?
Sure.
All right, now discussion.
So yes, when we go out to bid, all bets are off.
Yeah.
So that's, that could be an interesting thing to see that process next year.
And I can't remember, there's maybe like, only like two or three, like, companies that actually are service this area in general?
There are not a lot of companies in this area that we can even contract with, so when we go out to bid, we're probably going to be getting bids from the same three or four companies that we generally always get bids from, for these types of contracts.
Yep.
So can, would there ever be a consideration to go back to school, like Wallingford, I mean, is that put in as part of the bidding?
That can absolutely be a consideration. What we have found is that's more expensive. We can absolutely explore it again, I think that would be a great thing to do. Traditionally, that's been more expensive. You know, you, you have a company that is purchasing for thousands of districts, so they get a lot of wonderful price agreements with vendors themselves that they pass on to us, but we can definitely look into that, absolutely.
Community conversations. That's fair, and you said that will start in August, the process?
Uh, sometime in the fall, not, probably not August, but sometime in the fall.
Nick, yeah?
Uh, two questions.
One?
Yep, Stephen.
One kind of leads into the next. This bid is only Mill River, Clarendon, Wallingford.
Correct, because Tinmouth and Shrewsbury do run their programs still locally in-house.
So the next bid, will that be encompassing of all?
That's a really great, great question. In the past, we have not done that, because folks have been happy with their programs at Shrewsbury and Tinmouth. That does come at a cost, though. If, if folks wanted to look at that, we could definitely look at that.
Just a question.
Yep, yep, I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't have to, there's nothing to say that we can't, so that would definitely be something to talk about. That's a process that Stan will be asking for folks to be involved in that process, so if there are some board members who are very interested in that conversation, absolutely participate in that process. Stephen?
Yeah, um, how does, uh, maybe quickly or briefly, is it, is Universal Meals, Universal School Meals, is that, is that going into this process? Is that, is that actually moving forward, or?
Yeah, Universal School Meals had been funded the last several years out of COVID-related ESAR funds that the state has gotten. This coming fiscal year, those are going to be funded out of the Ed Fund, which is one of the things that we had a pretty robust conversation about in the fall. That was in addition to the Ed Fund, that increases property taxes and makes it a little more challenging to pass a budget, and that's something that we had nothing to do with. So that is in the state budget for next year to be provided. So Universal School Meals will still be happening. Was, was there more about the implications of that that you were wondering, Stephen, or just if it was happening?
Sorry, I'm just trying to, is that affect this food service management contract at all? I mean, with like the price for meals, or is some of this covered through that, or whatever? Are they connected at all, or am I just missing?
No, there, there will not be any, any real benefits or adverse effects, whether, whether there were Universal School Meals or not. Something that I do think the food service programs sometimes do better when Universal Meals are provided, because you have more students that sometimes access that, that maybe otherwise wouldn't qualify. So sometimes that's a, that's a benefit for the company we're working with, because just, if you say in a typical year, I'm going to make a number up, typical year, you have 50 kids in the cafeteria consistently getting meals, might see 60 when Universal free school meals are offered. So that doesn't really change things too much for us.
But what may, you know, because this, the original contract?
Yeah.
Is like, that was when, make, Universal didn't really necessarily exist, and there wasn't a number that was tied to it. So now they know, every school district is going to get this much for a meal, right?
Yes.
So it's like, now, when they come back to do a contract, they may say, well, we know what you're getting for this meal, and it might change the number that they bring to us.
Yeah.
Because of that, but.
You know, I really think the, what drives the pricing more is just the market cost. So the reimbursable amount from the federal government for a meal is, is not going to be as important to our food service folks as what's just the cost of, you know, a block of cheese. So I think what we're seeing, this increase, this increase is not being driven by, oh, there's more federal funding, great, we can ask for more, it's really just being driven by market costs, and they're, they have been sharing that they've been struggling, and gosh, they really wish they could increase by more, but this is the allowable increase defined by the state.
Alan?
Two things.
Yep.
Which doesn't have anything to do with cost, but if you're going to include folks in looking at the next bid, students, please, should be a part of that.
Absolutely.
Just because they have to eat them, and, and I think they can give you a better, I think they can, their input will be valuable. The second thing is cafeteria. Hasn't changed in about 40 years. It, it might not be a bad idea to have students and some staff folks go and visit some other cafeterias.
Yeah, in the area.
And look at, number one, the food, but also the setup of the cafeteria itself. Because I, because I, those tables are terrible, and especially if you're an adult, you know, they're just not comfortable.
Yeah, not fair.
And I, I think you could, and I understand, it may cost money, it may not, I don't know. But I think if you're going to look at the bid down the road in a year, that to involve the students and let them go, take a field trip to Middlebury, take a field trip to Fairhaven, take a field trip to Hunter Valley, I don't know, and, and taste the food and see how it's run, and look at the cafeteria and see how it's set up, I, I think, I, I think it would be very helpful.
Yeah, and I think in the past, when we have changed vendors, we have pulled partners in to do that work. It's not Stan just going, well, these, these folks have the best burgers, so we're going with them.
Yeah.
So yeah, that, that all absolutely makes sense.
So I have a question, because it sounds like you're talking kind of from a Mill River focus, right? You're not thinking of taking kindergarteners on a field trip to Middlebury, right? But my question is, do they serve the same meals at all of the schools?
So no, not necessarily, but somewhat similar. So each kitchen is going to be doing things a little bit differently. There are some things that they do in the high school that are actually, I think, a little more interesting and innovative, when it comes to thinking about, how do we, how do we try to get high school kids to eat kale, for example, which is ridiculously healthy, but who goes and reaches for kale? Well, you walk through this cafeteria and you see kids eating kale. But that's not necessarily something that they're going to be trying to get kindergartners to eat kale. I think that's a slightly different challenge, so I think they approach it slightly different ways. So the meal plans are going to be a little different. You know, they're, they're all invested in, how can we try and bring local foods, and how can we try and bring healthy foods, but they've got different audiences.
Right.
So things that might work here might not work at the elementary.
And Carol, you're right with your abbreviation, I was thinking more Mill River than the district, because it is, as my analysis.
And you've got somebody, you've got somebody in that kitchen looking at numbers and looking at menus, and looking at which menus are working and which menus aren't. So they're making some of those decisions, their purchases, as far as my, I understand, their purchases are, are specific to the needs of their cafeteria, so there's going to be some difference in, in those menus.
Anybody else have any other thoughts, Samantha?
Yeah, great questions.
Okay, all those in favor of approving this updated contract? Pretty good. Stephen's good, well, good.
Awesome.
Lovely. Okay, Tinmouth, indoor air quality update.
This might look familiar. This is because maybe two meetings ago, we were talking about this, and we've had a little development in this project. We had gotten initial clearance from the state, so construction, construction projects with grant funds are really interesting, and we get a couple more added layers of things we have to sort through to try and get approval. We had gotten initial approval for the project from Efficiency Vermont, we had gotten official approval first round from the Agency of Education, then Historic Preservation got involved, and we got some feedback from Historic Preservation after we started submitting our final plans, where we had to go back and revisit those plans. So there were some minor adjustments that Historic Preservation said we needed to make in order to get their clearance, to take back to the Agency of Education, to get the second step of clearance from the Agency of Education. So we went through that wonderful dance of paperwork, and went back to our vendors, and our vendors updated their costs based on that. Really, what's going to be different? Heat pumps are going to be located in places you can't see them, and that's the Historic Preservation piece of, if you drive past the building, seeing a heat pump isn't going to fulfill those requirements, but if you drive past a building and it's hidden, tucked around the corner, or it's on the new part of the building, that's okay. So these costs really reflect running things slightly longer distances to be able to, to meet the requirements from Historic Preservation. All grant funding, we are, we are well under, still well under the amount available to us, so I think we're doing the project, I think, in a, in a really cost-effective way, even though it's not our local funding. But we, we wanted to bring this back to the board, just to get that approval, because it is a change in cost of what you already had approved. So no local tax implications at all, the grant still covers everything, but these are updates based on making those shifts to get our Historic Preservation paperwork in order. So we would recommend that the board approve the additional expenditure from the grant fund.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, next, second?
I'll second it.
All right, any more just questions?
Any questions on that, or?
Get done. Great, all right, all those in favor?
Oh, Stephen's back.
He's there.
Did, did you hear that, Stephen, or do you want to abstain?
I did hear that, yes.
Okay.
I missed the vote, though, if you voted.
We're voting right now, so if you'd like to.
Okay.
Good, all right, that's everybody.
In favor, it sounds good.
Okay. Okay, the next thing is scholarship account.
So you have attached in your materials packet, a information on the Carol Welsh Memorial Nursing Scholarship. This is a scholarship that's been given at the high school in the past. We have a donor who wants to continue funding this scholarship. In the past, my understanding is that the donor has given us funds annually, and when we're given funds annually, it's really easy to disperse those funds, and we don't, we don't have to become the fiscal manager of those funds. The donor has approached us and asked, can I give you a lump sum to be used over the next 10 or so years? That complicates things, and that would be why I'm bringing this to you. The request of the board would be to approve creating an account for the Carol Welsh Memorial Nursing Scholarship. If we create that account, we can receive the funds, we can deposit it, and then annually we can disperse those funds from that account.
Does anyone want to make that motion? Then we can talk about it. Carol, second?
I'll second.
Any questions on that?
So, the first quit, so if they give us a lump sum, does it just sit in a bank account?
Yes.
That's not ideal for, you know, keeping up with inflation or anything, but I guess it's the.
Well, can we get a high interest?
You know, on the, on the amount of funds that we're going to get, I don't think it's, you know.
Yeah.
Would it pay for the?
I don't know that we have a ton of options either, really.
That's fine.
Any other questions, anything else?
No, scholarships are great. All right, all those in favor?
Everybody, great, thank you.
Okay, next thing is personnel. When's time to shine?
You pointing at me? We do have some contracts. We didn't have a personnel committee meeting, but as typical, this time of the year, things come out. So, first is, I will make a motion to offer a contract to Delaney Rowan, third, fourth grade classroom teacher, 1.0 full-time equivalency at Tinmouth.
I'll make that motion.
Already made it.
Well, I'll second that.
There you go. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next is a contract for Wade Davis, 1.0 full-time equivalency, fifth and sixth grade classroom teacher, actually, he's K through six, and this is at Tinmouth as well, right? Okay, so I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor? There we go. I think I have one more.
Mm-hmm, yep.
But I don't know where it is. I lost it. Was it for Summer?
Summer, yeah, and Summer's here, if, if we did want to hear from her, and I wonder if Carol might want to talk a little bit during discussion about the process.
Okay.
So Summer Stutes for Clarendon principal contract, two-year.
So I'll make a motion, just so that we can have discussion, to offer a two-year contract to Summer Stoutz, Summer, is that right?
Stutes.
Stutes, okay, thank you very much. As principal at Clarendon Elementary.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So we had, hi, Summer.
Hi.
I was, I was pleased to be able to be part of the committee that interviewed Summer, and we were very impressed by her interview. She comes with a ton of experience, and we look forward to having her at Clarendon. Summer, did you want to say anything to the board?
Say hi.
Say hi. I just wanted to say hi and thank you for the opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to working at Clarendon.
Great.
Any other discussion?
I'll throw in, Carol served on a committee that had two caregivers, two teachers, one staff member, and then Carol was the board member on that committee.
Robust committee.
So that committee made the decision to offer the contract, and that's been the process we used recently to hire at Tinmouth. That's how we hired at Wallingford and Clarendon in the past as well, and Shrewsbury. So I think that, that process has worked fairly well for us. We have really great folks making really good selections, so. We have really great folks making really good selections, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Congratulations, Summer, you're in.
Yes, congratulations, Summer.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Do you have a meeting?
Yes, we do.
It would be.
Thanks for asking. May 29th at 6:00.
Oh, I forgot, I forgot we already shifted that because I was going to say it would be graduation night, but we already talked about that.
I believe we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
No, I just forgot.
It's like we actually prepared and everything.
Yep.
Head.
So next personnel committee meeting is May 29th at 6:00.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. The next thing is policy. Nick?
Let me just see here.
No new policy meeting, right, Nick?
Didn't have, they didn't have one.
We did not have a policy. It got canceled for this week. And I would like to make a motion to put forth, oh, an adoption for policy F-32, which is transgender and non-conforming students.
I'll make that motion.
I made a motion.
Oh, you were making, I did the thing that Mike did to you. I'll second.
Beautiful. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Yeah, unanimously approved. And I don't see in the packet.
Yeah, the, and I think the B-10.
Yeah.
Was on there because it was going to get discussed at the meeting. So if it got discussed at the meeting.
Perfect.
Because that's the tobacco one.
But didn't, so we can skip it.
And if we.
That is the tobacco one.
And if we stick with the recurring theme, our next meeting should be the second Tuesday in June, which I think is like the 11th.
It's, oh, on the Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yep, 11th. What time?
5:30. Is that what?
That's what it normally is.
Okay.
Buildings and grounds, we haven't had one since the last one. I just sent an email to all of the BNG committee members and Tim because the one we're supposed to have is scheduled for Memorial Day. So I sent Tim a note saying, hey, should we have a discussion this month? Do you want to sneak in another one or do we want to wait until June? So TBD.
Okay. Thank you very much, Nick. Community engagement.
Community engagement, we met tonight. We looked at the reorganization and actually that led to a discussion of our charge and whether we want to kind of look at that. And we decided that we would wait for the retreat so when we review the bylaws, that we might want to just wordsmith that a little bit to clarify what the role is. We had a great conversation we made. We really want to bring back the community conversations. We want to make them more location-specific. For instance, we were just talking about the food service and, you know, it was very kind of Mill River-centric. We want to have Clarendon and Wallingford have an opportunity to have input into that. So we'll, we are, got work to do, but we're going to try and set a schedule. We're going to have a conversation series. They're going to be location and topic-specific. And we're going to try and organize them around the committees. So building and grounds, so we'll have discussion of facilities in each of the buildings. Personnel, we won't talk about specific personnel, but we'll talk about what are the staffing priorities at each of the buildings? What do they want to see more of, less of? Policy and how, talk about how policy impacts, you know, the costs of things and obviously finance. We want to have a lot of talk. We want to be able to communicate what things cost to communities. We talked about possibly scheduling them around 4:00-ish because of the after-school programs, there would be childcare available for people. We don't know how, I don't know how complicated that is. Is it all just the brainstorm? And the thing we're really hoping is that we can get members from each of those committees that are from those towns to attend those conversations so that we can really start to have a relationship with each of the town schools as, instead of, or in addition to kind of the Mill River community as a whole. So that's, that's what we did.
Great.
And there may be a ask down the road of board member participation in some of those.
Yep.
So if that doesn't sound like something folks can participate in or help pitch in with, community engagement needs to know that.
Yes. Thank you.
The next thing is negoti.
And didn't we, did we say July 17th, 6:00 P.M.?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, July 17th, 6:00 P.M. is our next meeting.
The next thing is negotiations and negotiations are still ongoing.
We are, we are working on setting up a next meeting.
The next thing is finance, pay orders.
I have those somewhere here. Okay. So I have payroll warrant dated 5/15/24, FY24, regular payroll in the amount of $6,855.28, another regular payroll in the amount of $617,370.83 totaling $624,226.11. I would ask for a motion to approve that as read.
I'll make them. Oh, Nick's got the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Nice. Vote? All those in favor? Good, good, good.
I've got accounts payable warrant dated 5/15/2024, general fund FY24 in the amount of $61,251.06, officials in the amount of $1,309.50, another general fund FY24 in the amount of $65,427.53, after-school program in the amount of $2,680.70, lunch program the amount of $2,399.04 totaling $133,067.83. Student activities Mill River, $4,102.14. Student activities from Shrewsbury, $565.97. Student activities Tinmouth, $1,695. Student activities Wallingford, $1,498.98 totaling $7,862.09. I would ask for a motion to approve those as read.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Everybody's good? The next thing is ad hoc committee. We're getting close to the end of our committee's timeline. Oh, actually, finance, we have a meeting next.
Thursday.
Next week.
Yes, we do.
Next Thursday at 5:00.
Is it 5:30? Let me check. Five, no, it is five.
Yeah, it's on the even. Lovely. And that, so the ad hoc committee, we're almost done. We're going to schedule a meeting for, right after that finance meeting. And so then next month, we should have a report that we'll make to the full board.
I think at 5:00.
Yeah, 5:00 for the finance.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
What date was that?
For the, that's not tomorrow, but.
5/23.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, okay.
So that's all for that. Transact, other legal business, we have to give me the right to sign things.
Yes, we do. So motion for Josh to sign on behalf of the board. Motion for Josh to sign payroll warrant and accounts payable on behalf of the board.
Anyone want to make that motion? Carol, second? Okay. All those in favor? Great. Good over there. And then we have another one.
I have one other one that, we have a grant that we traditionally get from VHI, Healthy SU Grant, and it needs a board chair signature. There is a deadline on this, so we'd like to get this sooner rather than later. So I would ask the board to authorize Josh to sign on behalf of the board to enter into contract for that Healthy SU Grant.
Carol, second?
I'll second.
Kim's got this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Awesome.
Good. That's everybody. Does any other, other legal business? Okay. So then agenda building.
So likely we'll have that pre-K presentation. And then we did have on our annual schedule, progress on goals or board education. I do think the progress on goals would be timely and would make sense and would set us up for, I see some head nods, is that?
Yeah, I think what we discussed before makes, that's making sense.
Okay, so like we, I think we did that maybe in February. We just pulled the goals back up and we'd talk through them a little bit and see where we are and if there are any things we want to try and do before we get to retreat with That's all I have for the June, early June, but what will be May 29 meeting on our schedule. We might have a hire or two. We might have a bid or two, just as we think about closing the year out, but I don't anticipate anything else.
Great. So let's do that. Do we need an executive session?
None that I'm aware of.
I would like to ask for an executive session.
Okay.
In reference, I'll make a motion, because I guess that's what we have to do, to enter into executive session for contracts.
And then do you have to do, so I'll make that, so you made that motion. Somebody want to second it?
Well, contracts, first we have to do the.
Yeah.
Specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Right.
That's the first one that we're going to make.
That's the first one we need to make.
Okay.
Premature general, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for contracts that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board in, at a substantial disadvantage.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Stephen, I'll send you a link.
Okay. Then now do we have to make a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to do that?
Sure, I can make that motion if we go into executive session.
All right. Second?
I'll.
All right. All those in favor?
Oh, can I, discussion, just for the, just for the public, do you anticipate action?
Oh, that's a good point.
No. I do not.
Just so folks know that nothing's going to happen after. You can absolutely stick around.
Nothing exciting is going to happen after.
Yeah.
Because this meeting's been suspended.
Sorry, that was discussion.
No, no, no.
All right, so now, all those in favor? That's everybody.
Okay.